I thought there was a dot underneath Marina's name. It's actually the mouse arrow. I thought there was a dot.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting for the Yountville Town Council on Monday, April 13th, 2015. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Councilmember Doren Becker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adoption of today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comment. On anything not on the agenda, I'm pretty sure you're both here for the agenda. So we'll move right ahead from public comment to our first item. Consideration of appointment of Vice Mayor to the Town Council. I do want to just, again, on behalf of all of us, say thank you for the years of service that we received from a former Vice Mayor, Louis Chilton, and the dedication he showed to the town of Yountville. And with that, we'll be, I will be nominating somebody for the first time in years, it seems like, since Louis was our Vice Mayor for several years. I'm going to be nominating Councilmember Hall, and I'll explain my reasoning briefly. I think, you know, we didn't know each other very well prior to you joining the council, but I've been impressed with the skill set that you bring with, obviously, a heavy emphasis on financial, you know, your professional financial experience, that being your career, but also the vision that you then translate that to the, you know, budget conversations we have here with the general operations of town services. I think your skill sets are completely appropriate, and you would be an excellent representation of the town in my absence. And I don't say that to mean neither of our other council members are lacking those skills, but I do feel like you would be the best person for this position. So you are my recommendation. So I'll open it up for further discussion from either of our council members or possible action.
I'll second the nomination.
I'll formally make the motion that we name Richard Hall as our new Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Is there any further?
But he's seconding it.
He doesn't get to second it, is he?
I didn't get to.
There wasn't a motion yet. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to say something before?
I'd be happy to make a comment.
By the way, wait a minute. Unanimous vote that Richard be the Vice Mayor. Now you may comment.
And I would like to, first of all, commend all of the council on our ability to work with one another, and I really am proud and honored to have this role. And I know I couldn't have gotten here without the help of all of you, so I'm grateful for that and trust that my ability to steward the town and its success will be continued. And again, I'm going to be reliant upon everyone sitting at this dais and the town staff and, obviously, our community. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And what I would also like to say is what, it was a difficult decision for me because I feel like all three of you are excellent candidates, and we've worked so well together as a council, and I know that we're going to continue to do that. So it was a good problem to have, is to have each of you with a unique set of skills that are real assets to this council. So I do look forward to working together with the three of you and with the new addition, whomever that might be, whenever that might happen. But I don't know if we want to make it, do we, should we make it official and have the Vice Mayor sit in the protocol-appropriate chair to my right?
If you would like to.
Do you want to stay here for now, or do you want to move?
My chair's warm already.
All right, fair enough.
We'll wait till the end of the meeting. How's that?
Just based on protocol, the way it's written, the Vice Mayor usually sits or always sits to the right of the mayor, so we'll make that change.
I can move. It's just going to be cold over there.
That's right. We'll make that change another time. So we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Discussion in possible direction regarding how we are going to fill the vacancy from the resignation of Vice Mayor Chilton. So Steve, are we going to start off with a staff report on our options?
Very briefly, and I will defer to the town clerk to give you a brief because she's done most of the research and worked with everything, and most of the public is somewhat aware recently of, you know, the relative number of opportunities, I should say, locally. But Michelle?
Thank you, Steve. Yes, the Election Code provides, Election Code 36512 provides for options for the council to fill a vacant council seat. And by law, we have 60 days to make that appointment. If we don't choose those appointments and we wait until November 2016, general municipal election and council would operate with four members. The two options provided by government code 36512 is either to select by appointment and go through the interview process, or to call for a special election. The special election wouldn't be held until June of 2016, and in terms of the appointment process, we would fill out a notice, submit it to the paper, we would have application process, interview process. In, as an option for appointment, we also, on one of the, the next agenda item will tell you the outline, map the outline of dates should council choose the appointment process to replace Councilmember Chilton. Special election, the next election for them is June 2016. There's a third option, which, in speaking with county elections, they referred me to, which is Election Code 4004, which provides for an all-male ballot option, although the town is already designated as an all-male ballot location and has been since 2010. The flexibility of the all-male ballot option provides for the election to be held on any Tuesday that's not consolidated with another election. So that's the little bit of flexibility that it provides in comparison to the special election.
And we're talking male, M-A-I-L?
Yes, 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 exactly. U.S.
I don't want anybody to worry about the postal service.
Exactly, no. So really, at the present time, just some factoids from reviewing our council history, we've had, since incorporation, we've had nine appointments, and we've had two or three special elections. So not a ton, but at least it seems the majority have been through the appointment process. In terms of the cost related to this item, I didn't mention that yet, it ranges from eight to 12,000 for an all-manual tally ballot and between 15 and 19,000 for an electronic ballot. These are estimated quotes from County Elections Office. When we had our last standalone election in 2003, the standalone election was $16,000. Our 2014 election was $8,800, offset by candidates paying for their candidate statements, which was, I believe, 672 per person for their candidate statements. That included English and Spanish statements, and that total was 2,688. So we have roughly 5,400 left over. There's additional expense, election expenses that reduce it down to the 5,400. So if you were to choose special election or all mail, mail ballot, U.S. mail ballot option, then we'd have to do a budget adjustment at some point to cover those costs.
So if I understood your cost correctly, both the U.S. mail option and the special election that would, by the nature of the fact that we're all male already, they're basically one and the same, is that?
That's my assumption, yes.
That we're talking somewhere between eight and 19,000 dollars, depending on how we do the tallying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Before, I'm sorry, interrupt you. I didn't know if you had any more of your report.
No, that concludes my report. Just wanted to give a little information. So basically, at the end of the staff report, I'm asking for council to take minute order action on one of the options, and those are presented under the recommendations section of the staff report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Hall?
Yes, thank you. Just to, I want to make sure I understand, because it says June 2016 for a special election, and that's because that's the next duly noted regular election cycle.
Yeah, I believe that's the June primaries for County Elections Office, yes.
Okay, so if we were to go down the avenue of a special election in course, it would either be through, at that period, June 2016, or in principle, we could exercise 4004.
Yes.
And do it on any Tuesday, and I'm not exactly sure what that means.
That doesn't conflict with an already scheduled election that may be out there.
Okay.
I'll defer to the town attorney if he has any more to add on that.
Okay. And then, and/or we could go down the application process?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if we were to go down the route of an all-male ballot election, we could then, we then would need to go down the next step of, when would that actually occur?
Right, we would have to make that determination, yes.
Okay, I think I understand.
But did you, just to follow up on that, didn't you say it needs to be no fewer than 114 days from today?
That's for the special election. For the all-male ballot election, that's a different date that we would have to establish.
So there's no minimum that we know of, or maybe we can find that out from our attorney?
The 4004 starts off by saying notwithstanding these other provisions, and those other provisions are the ones that require you, or would require another larger city to conduct the election on a special election date set among a list, basically, and that list includes that June 2016 date. When you go into 4004, you're outside of that realm of restrictions. So the 4004 all-male ballot is its own option only for small towns, and there are no restrictions, as far as I can tell, on exactly when that date is, except it can't coincide with another election.
Right.
So it's like an alternate election option, completely alternate.
Yes.
But that, with that, it would still carry the expense that you listed somewhere between eight and 19,000 dollars?
Yes, my understanding it would, yes.
By the way, Michael Coptin, welcome. Now that we have heard from you for the first time as our new town attorney, I wanted to just say welcome officially on behalf of all of us, the staff and the council. So thank you for your first bit of legal advice.
You're very welcome, and I'm very pleased to give it.
Thank you. Other questions of the staff report?
Nope.
Seeing no others. I know we're going to invite the public to comment on this. As the town manager stated, just prior to the meeting, a phone call was received by a local resident. Steve, could you share the content of that?
I'm just briefly, Charlene Silva indicated that she would prefer to see a special election.
Okay, thank you. With that, I invite other members of the public that are here. Cindy, I know you'd like to speak to this item.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Congratulations, Richard, and welcome. Michael, nice to meet you. Thank you for your advice. My name's Cindy Sosserman. I'm the President/CEO of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, and been reading the letters to the editor in the Yountville Sun and talking to folks on the street. And while appointments are, can be very productive and timely, and I realize that I've been through a couple of appointments myself, so I understand what the council's grappling with, I would advocate as well for a, not necessarily a special election, because June 2016 is quite a ways away, and there's a lot of work to be done, and you really need that fifth council seat filled. Under Election Code 4004, I would like to see mail-out ballots go out as soon as possible and allow the citizens of Yountville to choose that leadership position. So that's just my feeling about the situation. I'm sure you'll have a lot of interest from the community, I hope, for the vacant seat, but I would really appreciate it if the council would consider the mail, all-male ballot as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have a question.
Okay. Cindy, I think Councilmember Doren Becker has a...
I'm not of Cindy.
Oh, so we're going to receive the public testimony now, and then we'll have questions in a second. So any other public comment? No? Seeing none more now, I can invite Councilmember Doren Becker to ask a question on the staff.
If we do have the mail-in ballot and that person gets elected, what would be the length of the term, until November of 2016, would they have to run again?
Yes, yes. So there's that gap. We have the election on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in even-numbered years, but then after the registrar canvases the votes, and we come back in the first council meeting in December, and we make the appointment. So it would be that time period.
It's to fill the vacant term. It doesn't start a new four-year term.
It's to fill the vacant term.
Yeah. Any other questions of staff? What I wanted to ask, and maybe our attorney or any of our staff can share their experience with this, utilizing Election Code 4004, what is the process, legal and otherwise, to properly notice and to give candidates an opportunity to even be recognized as candidates? How does that process work with this type of 4004 process? Do we know?
Exactly the same as any other election. And off the top of my head, I don't have the process outlined, and I apologize for that, but it is exactly the same as any other. So whatever steps would need to be taken for a special election in June or November at the regular election, you'd need to do the same thing for an all-male election.
So there would be like a 30 or whatever day filing period?
There would be a timeline, and I'd work with the county registrar's office. So first, we'd have to find a date that works. Then we would do, just like we do for general municipal elections, we'd put for a notice of election out. That would run. People would know that they could do that, and they could come in. There's probably a time period similar to a normal election where you can collect signatures on your nomination papers. You turn those in, you have to get them validated, so minimum of 20, max of 30 ballot signatures. And then from there, you start working through the process of getting your candidate statements. If people wanted to have a committee and run for election, it's going to follow essentially the same process that you all have previously in running for a seat.
So the two fundamental differences from what I can see, calling a special election and doing this 4004 version are basically the same thing. It's depending, the timing of that might be different. The special election, the standard special election can't happen until June of 2016, which, you know, begs the question of, would we hold an election in June for a term that expires in November? So that's one thing for consideration. We could potentially have the 4004 election sooner than June, but we don't know yet exactly how much sooner than that.
Right. I would, I'd work with county elections. This would be new for us, 4004.
But in both cases, we're looking at a budget for that anywhere from eight to 19,000 dollars for either of those two options?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the other consideration we have before us is a similar application process, meaning folks apply during a period of time, they have the chance to campaign, you know, on their own behalf, and the decision-making, instead of it being through ballot, would be appointment from the four of us. That's the fundamental difference there.
Right. And just, this is outlined in the next staff report, but just for the public listening, that process, we are asking the council if they would like to do a pre-candidate orientation, similar to what we would do with the general municipal election. So those dates are provided. People can participate in that. If you, if council were to choose the applicant appointment process, that would be live, televised, public can attend.
The interviews.
Yeah, and so, you know, it would have public vetting, and there would be public comment. You could ask for public comment and go through that process. It would be open and transparent for people.
Okay. Either questions of staff or council discussion at this point about options? Vice Mayor?
I have a couple of comments. And, I mean, in thinking about this in the aggregate, and thank you for your feedback, you know, we're really sort of faced with a decision that, you know, would put a timeline or a significant timeline on it to hold this in an election cycle. But given that we're trying to ascertain who the right candidate is across the community, maybe that is the alternative to pursue. I personally have had conversations with people who say they're interested, but I don't know that we would see any formal applications from folks. I would trust that we would have a good pool of candidates to choose from. I trust that those people that are out there are watching, but there's no guarantee of that. What is the process if, and I'm not going to be biased, but let's say we don't have a pool of applicants, or do we have to choose from a pool of applicants should they come forward to us? Is that, is that something that's required?
The procedures for selecting, for appointing someone to fill the vacancy are pretty much up to the council. So you can adopt the procedures that you find appropriate, and that may include nominations and a pool from which you select an interview, or it may also not be that. You could, you could sort of come up with your own procedure. This is a very common one, coming up with a list of nominations or people who want to throw their hat in the ring, and then narrowing it down and selecting from the smaller pool. But it doesn't have to be that way.
But I guess my question further to that is, should the pool come forward and the council either can't decide on a single individual or decides not to choose a single individual? Do we have that prerogative, or must we fill that position?
If you do not fill the position, it would remain vacant until the November 2016 general municipal election, and you would operate with four members.
Or potentially, we could exercise a 404, 4004, and hold a special election some Tuesday before that special, that dated special election. Is that correct?
Yes, and these options need to be, these choices here need to be completed within 60 days.
Okay, okay. I understand. I'm just trying to see what the full vetting process of this is. I mean...
We're hoping to make that choice within the next 60 minutes.
Yeah, 60 seconds.
You know, you're...
Thirty minutes.
This is really one of the rare opportunities where you have a clear council policy direction. This is 100% your choice on how you want to go about the process. The 4004 process allows for us to move forward in a more timely manner than a special election, but with the same cost and really the same consequences. You were asking, what's the difference? The difference between an appointment process and the election is that the person has to choose to run for election. Do the regular, normal candidate filing, solicit the signatures, as opposed to the appointment process. Locally, we've seen the appointment process used most recently in the city of Napa in a very similar process. And in fact, the last two situations that I believe former Mayor Sosserman was alluding to were actually vacancies that the council, here at that point in time, used in appointment process. So the biggest difference, obviously, is when somebody says, you know, the, under the appointment process, it's the four of you making the decision. Under either of the election processes, it's the electorate making the decision. And I think those are probably, in a subtle sense, the nuance of the two. But the process is put in place to allow for a government, for a sake of sustainability and continuity, to be able to move quickly. So again, it really is, where's the council and the community? Council, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hall makes a good comment. We don't know what the applicant pool will potentially look like. You know, typically, what I would say, and this is where I will err to a slight staff recommendation for you, as opposed to saying it's a policy direction. If you choose to go down an appointment, we have a more detailed discussion. I do think it's important that the council establishes the appointment process. Otherwise, it could look really awkward and not well-organized if you don't have a clear process so that the public feels that the process for appointment is open and transparent. If it just looks like you guys are going to appoint whomever, that has its own nuances. So we would professionally respect that you have a process and a structure, and then that process go through so that those folks would do it. So those really are, you know, it's where you're at. It's an interesting situation, and there really isn't a right or a wrong. As long as we do whatever decision you make, then it will in turn direct how staff has to implement the outcome of the decision.
I don't think, you mentioned there have been three special elections in the course of our history.
Two or three.
That hasn't happened, to my knowledge, since I was appointed in 2004 for a year-and-a-half term, and then...
1986 or earlier is when those special elections have been conducted.
And 2007, Vice, former Vice Mayor Chilton was also appointed through this similar process. So it's been, it's been decades since there's been a special election.
That's correct, yes.
And part of that, a significant part of that issue has been cost. It's always been cost. But also, how long is the unexpired term before there would be a full-scale election? And we've had a case where, and then Mayor Sosserman sat and was interim mayor for several months with a vacancy after the resignation of then-Mayor Todd Carlson, and we didn't fill that vacancy at all. That was at least four months. I want to say at least four and maybe as many as six or seven months we did that. But we have, in my recent history, appointed with that process of public interviews, you know, a call to, you know, all interested parties to apply, and those processes have been effective and significantly more fiscally prudent. Whether that's the driving factor or not, we have to decide. You know, I'm a little concerned myself about holding a special election in, or actually, more than a little. I think it's a complete waste of effort and money to have a June election for a term that expires in November.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, that's not really an option. The other option would be this Code 4004, when we could move up that process to have a fuller term. But again, we have historically still appointed, even with a term as much as a year and a half. So that's just a little bit of background. Since I've been on the council since 2004, that's how previous councils have responded to this situation. Other thoughts?
It's interesting, then, that the former mayor feels that it would be better to have a special election. And so I wonder what that means in terms of the process.
Means she doesn't have to run for it. Well, I also read, I think we probably all saw in the Yountville Sun, some of the public comments about which direction makes the most sense for us. And one comment was that there hasn't been a full-fledged, I may be overstating this, there was an election recently, but there was no change in the council. There hasn't been a change in the council for a number of years, and there would be a thought that, well, we should go to a full special election to give everyone equal shot at the opportunity. I'm not convinced that a special election is the only way to provide that opportunity, though. So any further thoughts? Councilmember Muller?
Well, I'm certainly in favor of moving towards appointing a new council member. I think the cost is certainly a factor. We can't deny that. Some people might think it's not a lot of money, but I think we look at every dollar pretty closely. I also think that if we have a special election, and I don't think anyone can deny this either, that, you know, we've seen in the past general elections, very low voter turnout, and it's very common that with special elections, you even get a lower voter turnout. And another concern I have is the timing. If we go to a special election, I think we've all also seen that you get the initial votes, and then you wait. And you wait to see the final votes. And that's just all time that I think is not, and money that's not going to serve the community well. I think that we were asked to use our best decision. I think that we'll have people, I think we're going to have a lot of good candidates come out. I've heard a lot of people express interest. Don't know if they're really going to apply or not. And I think that by appointing somebody is going to best serve Yountville.
Thank you. Councilmember Doren Becker, your thoughts?
Well, I tend to agree with that, especially in light of the fact that it's just a one-year term. And that person is going to have to run, you know, for election after that. And if that, you know, if the, if the community is not, you know, happy with that person, they will have the opportunity then to unseat they, they will have the opportunity then to unseat them. So I don't know. I, I'm sort of torn. I like the idea of the mail-in ballot, except that it's still going to cost the same amount of money. And as Councilmember Mueller said, we watch every dollar carefully in this town. So I don't know. I'm, I'm tending to feel that we should have an appointment process.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Hall?
Yeah, I mean, these are all very important comments and voter turnout certainly is, is a challenge. I, I do think back to the most recent application on record that we can all be, and familiarize ourselves with, at least a perspective of the community, that it was not necessarily a completely transparent process. I, I have absolute confidence in our ability as this council to find a, an appropriate candidate. But Napa did not show that that necessarily was completely as transparent as one had anticipated or would have hoped. I do have confidence in our ability to make that decision. Certainly the money is, is a factor, but given that the timing potentially would reach out over two fiscal years and we have a little remaining budget to work with from this last election cycle and potentially budgeting the $10,000 difference in the following budget cycle, because I don't know that they would all occur within the same fiscal period, depending on our timing, which we have at our discretion, I would just assume that we, we might consider the other, the 4004.
My anticipation would be that the fiscal impact would occur in this fiscal year because in, in all candor, if you were to go the 4004 election, that would need to occur timely. I mean, you'd want it to...
Before June.
So that would occur before June. I mean, whether we get the official results from the...
Well, it's a definition.
From the county would be another, whether that's done by June. But the election and the expects would be incurred this fiscal year.
So that's the expectation?
Yes. Because a special election would be June of 16 at the latest. And the 4004 would be prior to that, so we'd be in the 15, 16 budget cycle.
Right, but we, I believe I understood that we still had $5,400 left from this last budget cycle to work with.
Yes.
Which could be the original down payment and if we planned on paying this, the bonus, the balance of whatever was available or required.
It would require a budget adjustment. We would bring that back to you at a certain point once we knew what the expense would be.
We have the money available, I think, if we mind, if we chose to use that discretion.
And I think just, I mean, again, there's four of us making a decision versus potentially 150 people. Might be a better decision than allowing it, you know, without a mail-in ballot. It's just perspective and again, trying to be as transparent. We haven't had a new individual on the council since I've been here. And allowing the public to have that discretion, I think, is relatively important.
Thank you. I, I completely agree with the original comments that Councilmember Mueller and Councilman Dornbecker made. Making two different but completely appropriate points, in my opinion. One being the fact that if the person that is selected is considered by the, the general public is not serving appropriately, that there's an, there's a, a process in November of 2016 to change that situation. And I also believe that we have been asked to make leadership decisions here. We do so on a regular basis. I consider this another leadership decision like other councils have made in the past. And to Vice Mayor's point, we have a very positive history of working with the appointment process. I think our transparency is rivaled by no one, that we go out of our way to make sure that we receive public input, whether it be in-person, electronic, whatever it might be, walking down the street. And so I, I can feel very confident that an appointment process by the council would be as transparent as any, any open election would be. If this was three years, I would feel probably differently about it. But the fact that it's going to end up being just over a year of an unexpired term, I do not support going to a special election or a election Code 4004 process because I do feel like we can receive as much input as we need from the public and then make a fair and balanced decision on an appropriate candidate. So I'm supporting that direction of appointment by council. So I'm hearing majority of the council say that, but wanting to make sure that that's accurate. And if somebody has a motion they want to make for, for that direction, I would be open to it. Or any other motion for that matter.
So it's, it's a motion for a minute order to request that the council seat that is now vacant be filled by appointment?
Yes, basically. The first, the language is, it's written here in the staff report. If, I can just read that to you on page three. Provide minute order direction to staff to begin the application process to fill the council vacancy by appointment. Direct staff to publish notice of intent to fill vacancy and schedule interviews at a special meeting on May 27, 2015. I believe that's the motion that you're recommending. Is that correct? With that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further direction by staff? Are we clear on, on that?
We're clear on your decision to make an appointment and now we will spend a little more time on...
We haven't voted on it yet.
I'm sorry. That's your motion.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So that's three to one?
That is no, okay.
Three to one. Yes, Vice Mayor Hall voted against that motion, but that motion does pass for the process to be appointment by town council. As the vice, or as the town manager just alluded, we're now going to go on to item 6C, which is, what is that process going to look like?
And again, as was alluded to you in some of the conversations, and I'll let Michelle go into more detail. Staff is recommending that you establish a process. We've included draft timelines and I'll have Michelle run through what we're proposing for you.
So for this item, in anticipation of the possibility of the appointment process, you can see that April 8th was, was the effective date of Councilmember Chilton's resignation. Today we're meeting to, you just made the decision for the appointment process. And then, once we leave this meeting, I'll prepare the notice, which is drafted in your packet, to be run in the Yountville Sun on Thursday, the 16th. And then we'll run it again on the 23rd, April 23rd. And then what we're looking for council direction on is the timeline of April 23rd or 24th. Well, actually, it's not necessarily a timeline, but it is the pre-candidate orientation. So that those people seeking an interest, we can include in the notice that we're doing a pre-candidate orientation if you're interested in serving and would like to know what being a council member entails. We want to do what we would do in a normal election cycle and, and provide an orientation of all the departments and, and the level of work involved. So they can become familiar with what they're signing up for. And then staff would determine a date for that pre-orientation if you're interested in supporting staff doing that. And then on May 18th would be the close of the filing period, which is just a little over 30 days. That would be Monday, May 18th at 5:00. And then on the 19th or throughout the process, when applications come in, I would verify that those applicants are qualified, which is 18 years or older, registered to vote and reside in Yountville. So those are the three basic requirements for that application. And then we would just wait till May 27th to conduct the applicant interview process. And that will be done in open session televised. There, our election vendor, Martin and Chapman, provides a great resource of materials that are already provided electronically. We just update with our town information. So they have a variety of questions, which I reviewed and sent to the town manager. And I think he shared with the mayor. There's a random drawing for the order of those applicants and then the interview process would start. And then hopefully at that same meeting, you would make the appointment. If you needed more time to think about it, then we'd have to call a special meeting at a later date. But certainly conclude that by June 7th so that we meet that 60-day requirement. And so after that, we're just seeking your direction regarding the pre-candidate orientation. And we'll proceed after that.
If I also heard our town attorney mention, we have flexibility with this process. You've given us like the, the bare minimum requirements as the election code states and that type of thing. For example, if the council had the interest in having or supporting someone hosting a, a candidate forum prior, prior to an appointment or something like that, we could add that into the process if we, if we wanted to. Is that, is that true? I mean, I think it's true. Whether we want to do it or not, I'm not saying yes or no.
I think what I would suggest to you is that, first of all, this is all the internal stuff that the town has control over. We don't have control over whether an external group would host the candidates forum, for example. That's, so to put it in the process, but to say you're open to that would certainly be, I think, an acceptable thing. Clearly, as you saw in the recommendation, we're trying to treat it with the same level of education and outreach so that the potential applicants/candidates well-informed, understand what they're coming into and treats it that way. So if there was an external agency like the Chamber or some other group that wanted to host a forum for a broader discussion, we could incorporate that.
Yeah, those are not, those are not mandatory for any candidate.
Correct. It's not. And again, it's, that's what I'm saying. We don't...
And not town resources.
Right. It's not town, it's not town hosted or, or paid for. Well, and I'm just throwing it out because, you know, we've heard from a couple of folks that feel like a, a full-scale election would be the best way to, to vet all possible candidates. And so I'm just kind of throwing that out there. If an organization, we have several that are traditionally hosts of forums like this. And if anyone wanted to step forward and give more public an opportunity to, to be a part of the process and hear from candidates, then that's, that's a possibility out there.
The caveat that I would also caution the council, and again, this is a policy decision, so I'm just going to offer you some cautionary. You've just made a decision to go down an appointment process. And if you attempt to do something that looks an awful lot like the election process, you could be confusing some folks because, in other words, what is, I'm just saying, we need to think that one through in terms of how you...
My point for bringing the issue up is that if we hold our interviews at 9:00 on a Tuesday and people say, "I can't get off work at 9:00 on Tuesday, but I can make a 6:00 PM forum", then I want to just have that...
We, we certainly can. And I would say, based on feedback we've received, you're going to receive comments from people regardless of the time and date that you selected, that it's not going to meet their schedules. That's just been one of our unique challenges.
So it'll be part of our job to make sure that people are aware again about the e-commerce, about the online, you know...
And I would also echo, I think, Mayor Dunbar, this is a great opportunity for us. For example, I mean, we need to let people know their application. We can have their applications go live and be on the town website right away so that people get an opportunity to see. And people need to pay attention to their applications so that the information they're putting can be seen. So I think we're seeing an ability to use some of the new tools, the technology, in a way to help increase the transparency about who is interested. And I'm using the word interested in seeking the council's appointment because it's not an election at this point. It's, and then certainly in a public meeting, if there are people that believe in the stronger and perhaps some people that are seeking your appointment, and certainly during the public session of the meeting, they're able to participate, send you their communications in support of candidacy, Y or Z. So you'll have a lot of opportunity for public input into that before you hold your workshop.
Right. No, I understand. I think some of the concern, Vice Mayor Hall brought this up. Other jurisdictions have had less than smooth processes lately. I know the city of Calstoga had some concerns following their appointment process. And as you alluded to, the city of Napa had a few folks that were put off by the process. Whether it was, they agreed with the outcome or not, it was a little bit more about the process. But I, I feel like if, you know, the, the process as presented by Michelle here today, I think gives us very clear understanding of what those dates are and what people have to do to, to apply. Anything in addition to this is kind of up to the community. And I think people have some confidence in us to be open-minded and transparent. And, and it isn't something that's predetermined or, you know, we're not welcome to all applications because we are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may just add one thing to this discussion. The, the law requires that the interviews of the candidates be done in open session by the whole council. And I just want to caution the council that if there is some sort of a forum being conducted that looks like an interview, but is not done in the council chambers or by the council, that could be a little risky in terms of...
And we shouldn't be there potentially for that reason.
Probably not, but it, it, it strikes me as a little bit potentially dangerous to have what looks like interview questions being posed to people who you ultimately select that you might also see their answers. If I'm, I may not be being 100% clear, but it looks like an indirect interview. And I just want to throw that out there, that that's a little bit risky to encourage such a thing when really the decision is the council's and it should be conducted through a meeting.
Fair enough. Well, that's very salient advice. And so maybe it isn't a good idea to even recommend other members of the community engage.
Obviously, if they want to conduct their own meetings and discussions and so on, there's nothing the council can do to stop them, but I might recommend not encouraging it or putting your stamp of approval on it as a, as a council. Just sort of letting it happen if it happens and ignoring it, I guess.
So I take back the last 10 minutes of what I was bringing up. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So with regards to the timing here and the application itself, I mean, obviously we've had these applications because there have in recent past been appointments, but is it similar to the existing application that we have today for people running for a board or commission? I don't think it was in the packet material.
No, it's not, because we would have to draft it up for you. But just for, it's, it's really a, a pretty simple application. And this information is provided through our vendor, Martin and Chapman. So there's, I mean, I could pass this through to you so you can see some of the things. And this will be updated to be in Yountville's form. And we certainly, the town manager will review it if there's something we feel we want to add to that and it's appropriate.
What I would suggest is that in many ways, Vice Mayor Hall, the process is similar to what the council, we would anticipate a more detailed application, perhaps a few more questions so that the council and the community are able to get a broader understanding of the potential applicant's interest. We're also going to be including a question on use of technology and various equipment to make sure that the, the person understands what they're coming into. But in many ways, it will, it won't look like that application, but it will be similar in the sense that it will have a number of questions.
Can the council offer suggestions on questions or should we not do that?
What I would encourage you to do is if a few of you have some questions, we will, if you would get those to me in the next couple of days so that Michelle and I can have those ready to go. And then we will incorporate and have a, a final application packet ready.
Would it be appropriate for, for the council to be able to review those questions in the application before it goes live?
Well, the challenge you're going to have is you'd, unless you, you, I can bring it back to you at another special meeting if you want to have that. Otherwise, I need some...
My question is, is that what would be required? You couldn't send it to us by email for us to look at and say, "We think this is a, a good way to vet the candidates"?
That sounds an awful lot like a council action to me. I think it would be better to have, if, if you want to approve the final form of the application, it would be best to bring it back before the council at a, at an agendized meeting.
And keeping in mind the timeline, the notice of vacancy to meet the timeline outline in the staff report we're on right now would be the 16th. So pretty much as soon as we're done with this meeting, I'll be preparing all those documents to have the application package ready for members of the public on Thursday, April 16th, after it runs in the Yountville Sun.
Okay. Sometimes I ask questions just to find out the information. Doesn't mean I'm advocating it necessarily, so, okay.
So, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions from council about the process as it's presented? I think we're basically getting right back to the original presentation of the process. Seeing no other, is there a direction? You need a formal...
Just direction for the pre-candidate workshop. I mean, it would probably take an hour or two and a half to do that, I would imagine, of staff. And those dates selected are dates that we don't see any department heads on leave during the summertime, so...
You're talking about the May 8th or May 9th?
There's four dates there.
23, 24 of April or May 8 or 9.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Are you looking for direction on which date or would that...
No, we'll decide the date. Those are just at least four optional dates for the public that's watching to be mindful of.
And one question to that, Mayor. Is there possibly that you would have more than one date, just for purposes of allowing or no?
Probably. And with all candor, the challenge that we have as a lean staff is there's only so many. I mean, this is also budget season and a bunch of other ones. And as many of you have attended our versions of these, we don't hold multiples just because if it's important... attended our versions of these, we don't hold multiples, just because if it's important, we'll try to either do it when we, if there's some folks that have indicated an interest. But I mean, we just don't have the capacity to have four individual workshops. Now, what I would also point out, these particular meetings are open to the public and also to the council, because this is our presentation of a workshop on what the role and kind of a orientation 101 to Town of Yountville government operation.
I think, I was guilty of it a few minutes ago, I think we're starting to fall over ourselves for transparency, and we're almost creating problems that don't need to exist, because I see multiple orientations would be challengeable, that somebody received information at one that didn't get it from another.
I see.
The process has worked in the past, and I know that our intentions are for as broad a participation and transparency as possible, but I think we have to trust the process a little bit, too.
I think in addition to this, if we, if staff can decide which one of those four dates, we can do the orientation, that we would add that to our notice of vacancy.
Right.
So people can immediately get that on their calendar and try to make their schedules available. And so we'll work towards that, so that everyone has everything up front.
It's also not mandatory, correct?
Pardon?
This is also not a mandatory orientation.
Correct. And what I would point, that's why we want a clarification and guidance from you. The council in the past has supported our doing the candidates' orientation, so I felt it was a fairly safe expectation that you would continue that. Many of you have gone through that process, but we wanted to make sure that that was something. And I will also echo the town clerk's comments, that tomorrow's management team meeting, we will identify amongst the management team, solidify the date, and then have the handout all ready to go, so that those potential applicants that aren't watching today's meeting will know exactly where we're at with everything. And it'll go out in the press releases and everything that we're going to...
I think we're good. We need to, I did want to invite, I know you're here and interested in the process we're talking about, so I wanted to give you a chance to comment if you wanted to.
Thank you. The only thing I would say...
I need to have you come up, because we're web streaming around the world.
Okay.
And recording.
Thank you. The only thing I would say is, May 9th is the famous town yard sale, just a reminder.
And just for the record...
K E R R I, Doran, D O R E, Mayan. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, with that, I think, does staff have direction yet, or not, that the council supports the process as presented? Is that inaccurate? I see all heads, no, it's okay, great. So thank you for that, and we'll land on that one date. It's always good to talk it through. Okay, moving on to, I'm assuming the staff informational reports is only on here as a typical agenda item?
Yeah.
Same with item eight, council meeting reports, comments. I did want to, again, I know we jumped right into things, but Colontano, Highsmith and Watley, represented by Michael Cobden, thank you very much for being here, and we're excited to have you as our new town attorney. And in a broader context, at our regular meeting, we'll reintroduce you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will point out, we have a full two-day orientation, taking advantage of the special meeting today and the management team meeting tomorrow.
There we go. Efficiency. Great. Then we are going to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, April 21st, at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
All right.